Day 16, 2022. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Independent, and the Two of Our Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk on January 7, 2022. Miniman Clark.
Here.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Here.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Here.
Mayor Perry. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a promotion of Police Officer Nicholas Haynes to Police Sergeant. At this time, I'd like to invite Officer Haynes to please come forward with your family.
I know it's warm, I'll try and be brief. Officer Haynes has been in an acting position as Sergeant since January of this year. Joined the Middletown Police Department in 2013. Prior to that, he was born and raised in Brick, spent some time in Middletown. He attended a graduate from Rutgers with a degree in psychology, held a number of jobs prior to becoming a police officer, including a physical therapist aide, a substitute teacher, a... He also worked with behaviorally challenged children, I believe, right? In a... Younger children. So he has a wealth of life experiences prior to becoming a police officer. He also received a lifesaving award from a joint resolution of the State Assembly and Senate for rescuing a 12-year-old swimmer in distress in Point Pleasant. So... And since he's joined the Department, he's one of our field training officers, crisis negotiators, and now about to become Sergeant, so...
Ready to do this?
Let's do it.
All right. Ready to go?
Okay.
Yeah.
I was... See, I was given the rules about swearing in prior to coming up here. Ready? All right. I, Nicholas Haynes.
I, Nicholas Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Police Sergeant.
Of Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations, Sergeant. Right. As I said, he had been an acting sergeant since January, but prior to that, he had another acting career, so I don't know if he wants to talk about it.
Hey, Chief, I run a PG show here, all right?
So if he looks familiar, and I know one of my daughters recognized from TV, he's also an actor for Bosley's Hair Club for Men, so we have the before-and-after picture of this here, so... Normally, we would have worn hats, but I don't want to waste that opportunity.
He can reach out to me, he could reach out to me.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Do you want to speak about the incident?
About what?
Something that might have been a flashbang from the...
Oh, yeah, right. Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Are you ready? Grab a pack, grab a picture.
Wanted in 13 states.
I want to thank Sergeant Haynes for his service and his family as well. His dad is a retired vice principal, athletic director for Middletown South. His brother's serving with the Monmouth County Sheriff's Department, his other brothers with the United States Army, so round of applause for the Haynes.
the United States Military Academy at West Point. At this time, I'd like to invite these students to please come forward and join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
So it's a very exciting day here for a lot of reasons. A lot to be proud of in Middletown, a lot of police officers and folks that are willing to sacrifice a lot. T-Bird, you want to grab that? But one thing I just want to say is that obviously the dedication to one's country is something that nobody in this room, no certificate, is ever going to be able to replicate and show our true appreciation for your service to our nation. All of you have put in a tremendous amount of work. One of the things, you know, I worked for a state senator, and he would often get requests for requesting letters of recommendation to appointments, help with members of Congress to get into one of the academies, and one thing that I always thought was tremendous was the dedication that not just the individual looking to be appointed, but the families, the effort that the families put in, and Tricia's here. And one thing that I just absolutely love is that, you know, Tricia and I found ourselves on opposite ends of a ballot one time, and what is great about our government and democracy here is that both of us are standing here on opposite sides of an incredible group of young leaders, and I'm incredibly grateful for that. So Tricia, I want to thank you for what you've done, for what you're doing to help these young individuals find their way and head off to West Point. So thank you for your efforts in that, Tricia, so thank you. The... I was telling these young residents, these young men, young women here, that one of the proudest moments for me was nothing that I actually accomplished in life, but it was when I went down to Paris Island to see my brother graduate from the United States Marines after what I can only imagine, you know, is an incredibly grueling process. And I think that the one thing I want to tell all of you is, as I said at the top, none of us up here on the dais, no certificate or anything like that, is going to be able to show you our thanks and gratitude, but you look at our world, and we all live in this often crazy world, and we are just so proud of the fact that individuals like yourselves are willing to go, knowing that you could potentially be in harm's way, but willing to lead men and women like yourselves into danger. And I think your leadership and everything that you're going to learn at West Point is going to propel you not just in your career in the United States military, but your career in life, your... All of your life goals are going to be able to be, you know, looked at and derived from your time at West Point. So I'm going to turn it over to somebody that knows better than me, and that's Tricia, to explain all that goes into applying to West Point. Tricia?
Sure. Applying to West Point in particular, in the multi-block effort of... Test they need to apply for nominations from both their Congress representatives and often times... But as many of them might let you know, the goal is to be an officer in the Army. Their dream is West Point, so they are looking at multiple avenues. They're talking about the process again, like open... Congratulated for their determination. Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia. Getting in this building, because this is the first time I think we've done this, and to be able to do it now for the first time here in this building is something to be very proud of and happy that it occurred. But the Township of Middletown is very excited to present this Certificate of Achievement to you on your appointment to the class of 2026 at the United States Military Academy at West Point. We applaud you for your prestigious accomplishment and wish you the best of luck as you train to become an officer in the United States Army. Thank you for your willingness to accept this duty to serve our nation in this selfless way. Middletown is beyond proud and honored to call you a resident. Congratulations to all of you. into this world and to assault... Middletown's very proud of you. Congratulations. Tricia's got all the certificates for you. I'll let her hand them out, but once again, we're so proud of all of you. So thank you all very much. Dad, you want to come up here with whoever? Congratulations.
Brooke Pele, Coach Uziah Malan.
If you might hear, after committee meeting all the way from the back, to meet this incredible group here. You got plenty of room. And Committee Woman Kratz is down here with me, because she actually sent me a story that was really inspiring story. You know, Middletown's so proud to be able to be represented by champions, right?
Yeah.
Come on, give it to me.
For the first Central Jersey, yes.
Special Forces Cheerleaders. All of you are... Middletown can't tell you how proud we are. Proud of you, proud of your coaches, and proud of everything that you're representing, because you went out there and made sure that they knew who the Central Jersey Champions were going to be, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Township of Middletown, and Coach, I'm gonna let you jump in in a second, all right? All right. I didn't give you that warning back in the back, so that's why I gave you the warning now. The Township of Middletown hereby congratulates Special Forces Cheerleaders on winning the World Championship in the Cheerabilities Elite Division of the 2022 World Cheerleading Championship, and by making history for being part of the first team from Central Jersey, and I'm okay with admitting that Central Jersey does exist, to compete in... Your spirited dedication towards achieving your goals is truly inspirational, and we're so proud of you for overcoming challenges and breaking the boundaries. As one of only five teams selected worldwide, you and your squad have represented our town, our state, and our nation in an awesome way. Continue to fly high and drink big, because we're going to be cheering for you from the sidelines. Congratulations to all of you.
I just think this whole journey has... This is something, I coached this team for six years, we didn't get through a lot of hard work. And it's just, I'm also a special ed teacher, so it's kind of all come together, and we're here, and they were amazing. They were not always independent. Isn't a buddy this year, she's just a few spots, so she has their six. So she's on the mat with them in case there's a fall or something, but otherwise, they're a completely independent team. They've learned, they do stuff that other athletes in our gym do, and... Every day, don't we, guys?
Yeah.
Well, Coach, thank you for your service, not only to our students, to these young ladies right here. And... And I want you to do one thing for me. It's one, I only ask of one thing, and that is that you have friends and family that are in this room right now, that have all been cheering for you your entire lives, and I think it would be very great to give them a round of applause, because they believe in you, Middletown believes in you, and we're all so proud of you, so give all your parents and everybody a round of applause. You're prepared for it now? It's okay.
We'd like to throw a stump up.
We do a Special Forces cheer on three. Come together, hands in, hands in, hands in. Second, Jim was going to be like, "Yeah, sure, no problem." Last because he got so afraid. All right, ready? Roll a smile right here, and then mom says, everybody's going to come up to it, right? Congratulations, Detective.
I feel like I should break on for him.
Congratulations, right?
Recognizing May 11, 2022, as School Nurse Day in the town. Recognizing May 30, 2022, as Memorial Day in the township. Next week in the town of Middletown. Agenda, we have a pool of minutes for April 12. In Kunko Park, buy and for the township. Authorizing the issuance of $1,300,000. Township for financing for 2022-3341.
Okay, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Recuse.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt this ordinance on second and final reading.
Recuse, noted.
This time, we have proposed ordinance 2022-3342, ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Barbary Place within the Township of Middletown and accepting drainage easement and right-of-way associated with the area to be vacated.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3342. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance for public hearing 2022-3343, and ordinance approving entry into a contract for purchase of real estate identified as Block 532, Lot 45, Comptons Creek, Port Monmouth.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3343. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committee Man Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. We have ordinance 2022-3344, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-3314, modifying the easements area on Block 136, Lot 3, Main Street right-of-way, and Brainerd Avenue right-of-way, which easements are upon portions of township-owned property pursuant to the Raritan Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project, Port Monmouth, New Jersey, Phase II, Contract 5.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3344. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance for public hearing 2022-3343, and ordinance approving entry into a contract for purchase of real estate identified as Block 532, Lot 45, Comptons Creek, Port Monmouth.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3343. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committee Man Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. We have ordinance 2022-3344, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-3314, modifying the easements area on Block 136, Lot 3, Main Street right-of-way, and Brainerd Avenue right-of-way, which easements are upon portions of township-owned property pursuant to the Raritan Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project, Port Monmouth, New Jersey, Phase II, Contract 5.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3344. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinance 2022-3345, bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $300,000 for construction of a portion of the cost of a dog park and dog park parking lot in Tyndale Park, buy and for the Township of Middletown in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $285,000 in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held June 6, 2022. This time, we have introduction of proposed ordinance 2022-3346, an ordinance by the Township Committee amending the ordinances of the Township to repeal and replace Section 540-527 to adopt a new Section 540-527 to adopt flood hazard maps to designate a flood plain administrator and providing for severability and an effective date.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee Man Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held June 6, 2022. This time, we have the consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 22-144 through Resolution 22-159, including firefighter... identified as Block 532, Lot 45, Comptons Creek, Port Monmouth.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022 dash 3343. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second, uh, second and final reading. We have ordinance 2022 dash 3344, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2021 dash 3314, modifying the easements area on Block 136, Lot 3, Main Street, right-of-way and Brainerd Avenue, right-of-way, which easements are upon portions of township-owned property pursuant to the Raritan Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project, Port Monmouth, New Jersey, Phase 2, Contract 5.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022 dash 3344. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinance 2022 dash 3345. Bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $300,000 for construction of a portion of the cost of a dog park and dog park parking lot in Tyndale Park, by and for the township of Middletown in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $285,000 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Chairman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held June 6, 2022. This time we have introduction of proposed ordinance 2022 dash 3346. An ordinance by the Township Committee amending the ordinances of the, of the township to repeal and replace Section 540 dash 527 to adopt a new Section 540 dash 527 to adopt flood hazard maps to designate a floodplain administrator and providing for severability and an effective date.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held June 6, 2022.
Yes, I have that one.
This time we have the consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 22 dash 144 through Resolution 22 dash 159, including firefighter applications and bingo and raffle applications, removing Resolution 22 dash 145 and 22 dash 148 for a separate vote.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz. Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have Resolution 22 dash 145, a resolution authorizing fireworks display Beacon Hill Country Club on June 30th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Recuse.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 22 dash 145 with recusal noted. This time we have Resolution 22 dash 148, a resolution approving additional funds for previously approved contract Architect of Record.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 22 dash 148 with recusal noted. This time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right, uh, Committeewoman Kratz.
What a fantastic night. I, um, just wanted to offer my congratulations to Sergeant Haines and also congratulations to all of our students who are attending West Point. We are really so humbled when you see students stand, you know, before everyone and make that commitment, um, to our country. And it's, it's really quite wonderful to see that they were, you know, choosing to dedicate their life in such a way. So very thankful for their service. Um, big congratulations to Special Forces, very near and dear to my heart. Um, I have the privilege of knowing some of the moms of, of some of the children and it's wonderful to see that hard work and practice and perseverance truly pay off. And everyone really wants to belong somewhere and it's really, they have paved the way to show the world that, you know, there's a place for all of us. So congratulations to all of them and really such a great job. Good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Committeeman Sedambrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two, uh, just, there's two items I want to echo Committeewoman Kratz's comments with regard to congrat- congratulations for Sergeant Haines. Um, so I, I, I didn't hear the Special Forces cheerleading team before, so this is, is certainly new to me and news to me. But I'm glad that, uh, these organizations do exist, uh, as Committeewoman Kratz mentioned, to make everything all-inclusive. And, and, uh, there is a place for everyone and we're glad to recognize them here in the Township Committee in, uh, in Middletown. Um, and when you see, uh, students, um, ready to dedicate their lives to the United States Military Academy, they've made a decision earlier than a lot of students do when they go to college. They go to college, they don't know what they've declared, they don't know what they're gonna do with their lives. They just don't know. These students know. And that's, that's a first step to making, uh, this world certainly a better place. And again, uh, making Middletown an example of the leaders that we have here. And the only other item, Mayor, that I have is, uh, just looking for a status update on the, uh, on, um, the Middletown Gardens and how, uh, how your planting's coming along.
Oh. Well, you know, I, I, I'm not, I didn't get a plot over at Stevenson. Um, but, uh, Reagan and I were doing some gardening. Um, if, you know, it seemed like I got almost all the plants planted, but two didn't make it. I'm not gonna point fingers at who might have stepped on them. Um, but, uh, it was Reagan, uh, 100%. So, um, but, uh, we still got the rosemary and the tomatoes done, so.
That's fantastic, Mayor. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, Committeeman Clark.
Sorry. It truly is remarkable. Um, the amount of maturity that they showed to make that decision, uh, at such a, at such an age and in a transition in, in your life. Um, and we got to recognize them tonight, but we also have a lot of military that are active duty, um, retired that are in this town and it's, it's a point of pride. And I know Mayor Perry, um, ex-Mayor Sedambrino and Deputy Mayor Hybel have had the opportunity many times over, over the years to recognize them. And Committeewoman Kratz and I, as the newer of the group, are enjoying the fruits of that because it, it truly is a sense of pride for this, uh, for this municipality and for me to be sitting up here. Um, the Special Forces dancers, uh, um, again, I didn't know that they existed and I think it's the coolest thing. Um, and as Committeeman Sedambrino said, the inclusion that Middletown displays, uh, when we have the opportunity uh, to is, is really remarkable from, from one end to the other, you know, whether it be dancing or a baseball team or a basketball team. Uh, all the different community-oriented events that we have and we have the opportunity to recognize here really shows what the terrain of Middletown is. And it's, uh, it's just like everything, right? We got a little bit of everything and that's what makes us so awesome and so unique. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, uh, EMS Week is coming up and it's a, uh, it's a hard job. It's actually, I started as a volunteer in Middletown with the Wincroft First Aid and I blossomed into a whole bunch of other things and, uh, um, the, the teams that work, uh, within our five squad and, uh, and within the, uh, MEMS service are to be commended for all their hard work. So that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor. That was a freebie for me, Rick. All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, just, uh, I, I won't echo the, the comments, but, uh, all, you know, I agree with, um, for, for everybody here. I was so great to have them all come in. It was really nice. Um, two things I just want to mention. Um, tomorrow at the World Trade Center Memorial Gardens, Middletown, um, is, uh, very honored to become the first municipality. I'm not sure if everyone here is familiar with the story of the Survivor Tree at the World Trade Center. Um, but one tree was salvaged that has, it was Calorie Pear Tree. And, um, this tree, um, was burnt, beat up, scratched, but survived, um, at the World Trade Center. And it's called the Survivor Tree. Um, the branches of this tree were removed to, when it was transported out of, uh, the World Trade, uh, out of ground zero. And it was taken and given to the New York Parks Department, um, to try and salvage it. All the limbs of this tree were cut off, um, to try and, I, I'm not an arborist, so I'm not gonna pretend like I know. Um, but to try and resurrect this tree, uh, all the limbs of it were cut off. Um, I guess to focus on the trunk of it and to re, and make it recover. Um, those limbs, however, were, uh, they call clones, um, were replanted. And Middletown tomorrow will be the first municipality outside of New York City to receive, uh, this clone. And this tree is now a 15-foot tree. Um, and it is being escorted down here by the Middletown Police Department and the Middletown Fire Department. Um, and it is, will be replanted um, later this year at the World Trade Center Memorial Gardens. So as the municipality that lost the most individuals in September 11th, 2001, um, outside of New York City, um, it's an incredible honor. Um, will be joined, members of the Township Committee will be joined by, um, Commissioner Director Arnon, uh, Commissioner Kylie, Commissioner La Citra, um, as well as Captain Ed Callahan from Naval Weapons Station Earl, um, uh, to receive this tree. Um, and I think it is, while we're in May and we're not really thinking about the 21st anniversary of September 11th, um, it really is an honor that Middletown will receive this tree and have a piece of, uh, the World Trade Center, a living piece, uh, of the, of ground zero here in Middletown. So, uh, if you're available tomorrow, 10:30, um, that tree will arrive and, um, it'll be a very nice and, and solemn ceremony. Um, the one, one other thing I would just want to mention is that the Annual Police Memorial is taking place on Friday. What time is that? 11:30? Okay, so if, um, if, uh, you're available, obviously it's taking place right down, um, at the end of Town Hall's property. It's at 11, um, where the, the memorial has always sat. Um, but it's a very nice ceremony and then everybody comes back, uh, will be coming back here afterwards. But, uh, just a nice way during, uh, President Kennedy, uh, signed, uh, in 1962, proclamation declaring the, uh, this week as, um, National Police Week and uh, every year it's, it's been, uh, we always have a very nice ceremony. Retired police officers and friends of those that we've lost. So, um, I hope to see you, uh, hopefully at one of those ceremonies, either tomorrow or on Friday. With that being said, um, any member, we'll open up for, uh, public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? We ask that you just state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Um, with that being said, yes, sir, come on. No, you have to come on down all the way to the microphone. Uh, hold, hold on. Just come all the way down to the mic. It's okay.
Yes, my name is Mike Barber. I'm 210 Bay Avenue in Leonardo. And I want to take this opportunity to personally thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and the Township Committee for preserving a piece of Leonardo history, Leonardo Lighthouse. I applaud both, all of yous. I just want to say thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It's, uh, Ted and I have been working on it for, uh, a long time. And, um, you know, it, it, what, what I'm really proud of is when, you know, when I, when I first went as mayor to see that beacon and I saw, I went inside and I saw the condition that it was in. Um, you know, I, I have a letter from a Keansburg mayor from, you know, 40 years ago asking for it back. Um, and I have the reply from the Middletown mayor saying, no. Um, a little bit more polite, but not that much more polite than that. Um, and, and Ted and I went out there and we took a look at, at the, uh, at, at the lighthouse, at the beacon. And we, I just knew that we had to do something about it and we had to clean up the beach. We had to, we had to fix this lighthouse because it really is an important piece. And there's actually one individual in this, in this room who deserves credit. Um, and, and that's the gentleman right there in the back. Um, and because he gave me about 1,400 pages of documents all about the beacon. And so, Vin, thank you for that. But the, the beacon, um, the, what, what I really am proud of is that it's being done by Middletown employees, the work. Done by Middletown DPW. Um, because you, you look at a structure like that, you look at, at something as important, as fragile, um, but all the while so tough in the sense that it's been so resilient because it's sat there through how many storms that we've had. Um, so to know that that beacon is being shored up by our welders um, and that eventually, and that we, we've begun the process of cleaning in, in and around that beach, but to know that that is gonna be painted um, back and, and, and fixed up, it's really gonna be a treasure for Leonardo and, um, I, I'm, I, I'm grateful for your, for your, your thanks and, and, but I, I want to thank you for your, for your patience and time that, um, it took us to, to get there and, and it'll be one heck of a ribbon cutting.
When I was 14 years old, that was our lookout point where we brought the girls to look at the Verzano fridge. So I really appreciate it, everybody.
Well, I'm not sure I can let you back up to the top, but I'll let you reminisce maybe in a couple of months after we get a painting.
When my dad was in the Navy, the captain would put my father at the helm because he was from his area and he'd bring your ship around the tip of the hook and use that light. That's why I'm really, really can't thank you enough for restoring it.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, you wanna come on? I, I, I saw you getting ready, so. Just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is James DeRogeras, 226 Harmony Road in Middletown. I have lived here for 20 years. I'm a Columbus 15, Cub Scouts, Boy Scout for 11. We hope to see you on Saturday.
I'll be there.
Yes. And, uh, aside, of the five scouts that are making Eagle this Saturday.
Yeah.
Three have done it together.
Oh, really?
From eight years old to 18.
Oh, wow. I did not know that. So I think that's the first time I've ever.
Yeah, they went to Village Thompson and then South. One of them went to Mass.
Okay, we won't hold that against them.
No.
Right, Frank? Okay.
Um, you should also know that of the five scouts, uh, Mr. Johnson is Air, is Army ROTC at Virginia Tech. Top of his class. And my son is Air Force ROTC at Embry-Riddle. Okay.
If you, if you want to work for me too, I mean, Laura's gonna get pretty upset, but if you want to start doing my briefings before every event too, that was a pretty good briefing. I gotta give you credit.
I just want to let you know because it's, it's unusual and Scouts has been, uh, under fire and has become less important last decade, so. He said.
I met with a scout right before, uh, right before this meeting.
Okay, so.
Oh, that wasn't it?
No.
Oh, okay.
The past several years, I have come before this board to ask for assistance with dealing with Ice World and the nuisance that Ice World is. And while I have, um, asked for help and I've even called Mr. Mark Contante at, I don't know, 1:30 in the morning on several occasions when the sound has exceeded 60 decibels, there's been no action. So I don't know if anything can be done, but I need something to be done. What it sounds like from my distance at my window. Now you're further away, so I'm gonna increase the volume slightly. And I know that you're going to tell me this is not a calibrated sound meter. It's not. But it was 65 decibels in my house, has 65 decibels here. And this is running all day, every day until 6:15 AM, 6:20 AM.
This is the generator?
This is their cooling unit. And, and the problem that we have is that my property is receiving.
I can't, we, you're not gonna get picked up on that microphone.
Okay. We'll turn it off. That, our property is receiving both a direct sound from the cooling tower and reflected sound from the second, quote-unquote, indoor sports facility that they built. As our bedroom is above our fence height, there's nothing to block it. And the swim club, sorry, Ice World, did not put in appropriate ring ring. So I'd like to ask if the township would enforce Ordinance 336 dash 2. Now, I don't expect you to have them memorized. But 336 dash 2 is called Television, Radios and Sound Producing Devices. Section B says, "No person or entity shall operate or allow to be operated outdoors upon any property or in any residential zone, any motorized construction or landscaping equipment, machinery, generators, compactors or power tools." Anyone? Um, between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So they make sure to turn it off right when they could be turning it on. Every day. Right? There's also an ordinance 540 dash 632. Which is the screening, screening of equipment or machinery. And it says here that when effective operation of a building or structure or equipment within a building or structure necessitates placing machinery, motors, generators or necessitates placing machinery, motors, generators, or similar devices for cooling, heating, or generating purposes outside or on top of any structure, they shall be screened by public view." It's not screened, it's never been screened. Their cooling units, that's more of an air conditioning unit, that's on Harmony Road itself, is covered in evergreens, you cannot, you cannot see it. I know that you can't see the picture, I'm sorry, but the machinery is completely enclosed through these trees, but on the Old Country roadside, they've done very little. The screening shall consist of densely planted evergreen shrubs, which shall grow to not less than five feet after one growing season, a solid and uniform fence at least five feet in height on four sides of said equipment. And the township helped me remove this nuisance from my life.
We're, we're gonna be having some conversations, um, with, with Ice World, um, uh, in, in the very near future, and, um, you know, Tony and I, Tony Mercantante and I.
And I, I've called him multiple times.
Well, he, you were the first thing he brought up when we did, when, when we said we were gonna meet with him, um, probably because.
It's been.
It's one-thirty in the morning, and, and he probably doesn't want those calls anymore.
I don't call him at his house, I wouldn't call him at his home.
Oh, all right.
Um, one of the things we were hoping would help solve the problem is we, we found a number of things on Ice World's, um, property that they're not permitted to be doing, and they've made an application to the zoning board to have a hearing on some of those items, and the zoning board can then impose conditions to, to minimize the impact of some of those things. The problem, and I actually just talked to the planning department today, they haven't really pursued the application, they filed it, it's not complete yet, and they're just kind of dilly-dallying, so, um, we're gonna have to just start issuing them some summonses, uh, until they, until they comply. Um, they promised us screening for those, those items, and they've never done it, so.
And the county comes during business hours, at which point they turn down the turbines.
So everyone's aware, we don't.
We don't do sound testing.
Do sound, uh, readings, the county has a, uh, a, a staff person who's certified, um, has the proper equipment, but he's correct, that they don't, whenever they come to do those calibrations, they're not, uh, making the most noise, so we haven't convinced the county to come out at one-thirty in the morning yet.
They could come out at ten o'clock at night, but, I mean, I encourage you to drive down Old Country Road, I know you can go home that way, so.
I don't live that far.
You will hear that noise, and, you know, my neighbor who could not make it this evening, she had a fortieth anniversary party yesterday for her and her husband, and it was deafening, because their yard is closer, at least I've got a fence, they have a chain link. So, um, the other question is, the infiltration basin, I thought was only for stormwater, and we've had some additional mosquitoes and insects problems, so I'm asking if the township could have that checked, because part of the problem, and there's an ordinance for that too, but I won't bore you, is that they are dumping the ice scrapings into the infiltration basin.
We'll definitely check that.
Which is only for stormwater.
We'll, we'll definitely check into, into that one, ASAP.
I would appreciate.
The conversations about the screening, um, what we should be having in the next few weeks, uh, among other things.
Because they're not going to do anything voluntarily, we, you, you heard me come beg you for help for over two years, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other member of the pub? No, done? Okay, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Have a good night, everybody, thank you all very much.